I'm gonna go grab my coffee too. And that's not a good one for Pat's sale. Cheers to coffee. We all obsessed.
Say what?
I'm obsessed.
It's a good way to start the morning. Finished my morning ultra blue monster brewing coffee from Glendale. I'll be from Chicago. Yay, another Glendale resident. Hey Jessica.
We're also live on Facebook now.
Alright.
Yeah, what got you grabbed up this morning? What was there? What poison did you pick today?
Oh, I just had, unfortunately, I just had a glass of mango juice. Cause I was feeling it.
Any new friends join us yet? Not yet.
Not yet.
Thank you all for being here. I know it's early and we know that this is gonna be painful to be part of, so thank you for joining space with us.
And also on like the shortest notice ever, like it only could have been less notice if we emailed you at 3am. So thank you so much for your constant love.
Nothing since I'll Phoenix made some country gravy. Oh.
What?
Matt is always caught up with some amazing things.
You, you cooked all that this morning, Matt?
Who are you?
After that long terrible village planning committee meeting last night? Wow.
We're there.
That's impressive.
Yeah. And got up this morning, made some gravy and came back for more nonsense. I mean, kudos. Kudos.
I feel like I have a hangover just from planning this. Okay. I am just in my notes right now. I'm trying to plan my comments, so excuse me.
Rhea, do we see an activity in the, in the council chamber?
The council chamber?
Yeah.
Um, it'll start, I think it'll start exactly streaming at nine AM.
Oh, got it. Okay, so it's not even.
Michelle, you have your hand raised. Do you have a question?
On mute. Can you, can you hear me alright?
Yes, what's up?
Okay, cool. I'm on my phone. I'm still figuring out how to do both at the same time. Um, yeah, it was about being in the WebEx. I just wanted to check in that like, it's just showing kind of like a collage of stuff, but I heard someone say that it'll like begin at nine AM, so.
Correct.
So just wait for that.
Yeah, Michelle, are you trying to navigate this Zoom call and the WebEx call from one cellphone?
Well, I was try, no, I, I have the Zoom on my cellphone and the WebEx on my computer. Last time, last city council meeting, I was trying to do both on my computer and it was.
It, it doesn't work.
No, yeah, it did not.
Okay, just so long as you have two devices and we'll have you on mute when it's time for you to speak at the WebEx. Make sure you have an ear there, cause they'll call on you there. And then you'll just hear comment and then come back to us and we'll give you hugs. And thank you for your service.
Right on. Cool, thanks.
Do you have more friends? Let me see. Hope they're all in front with me.
We can start now. I'm just setting this thing. There are people watching also on Facebook now.
Okay, awesome.
Great. Alright, so thank you everybody so much for being here. Uh, most of you let us know what you are gonna be sipping on to get us through this meeting. If you're joining us on Facebook Live, please do that too. Let us know what part of town you're coming from. And I wanna pass the mic to our lovely and bright hostess with the mostest, Zoraida. Take it away.
Oh Patricia, you do me way too much justice. Hi everyone, my name's Zoraida. I am she/her pronouns and I'm super, super happy to be in space with you beautiful souls this morning. Uh, to make this toxic subcommittee meeting a little bit more tolerable. Um, please make sure you change your pronouns if you're able to and we're gonna be, um, asking us to communicate in the chat. So if you could make sure that you're addressing all the panelists and attendees so that everybody can hear what you're saying. That would be wonderful. Um, please make sure that you're asking questions, talking to each other in the chat. This is our space, so let's, uh, utilize it the best way we possibly can. Um, so, uh, we're here today to disrupt the nonsense of City Council Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee. Because they wanna talk about barking dogs and we, uh, know that there's been major complaints about PPD and MCAO colluding to destroy the lives of people who are protesting against them. Um, we're sure that you, we're sure you have, or if you have not, we can, uh, help link you to it. Seen the ABC 15 news segment called Politically Charged. That was, wasn't really breaking news for many of us because we know that PPD is, um, coin carrying neo Nazis, but they've been exposed again. This is really a fluid agenda. Um, this is gonna be likely a short rapidly moving meeting. We're gonna watch the live stream from the opening comments and the ones for the agenda items two and three in order to support the folks who are speaking truth to power today. Um, enforcing the convo that we need to be having with PPD to combat their lies and political prosecutions. Um, then we're gonna detox, cause that's gonna be really needed after all that nonsense. So just hang tight with us and we'll, uh, get right into it. Um, is it, we're, we're not close to timing it, so has anyone seen the segments that were, um, aired? Yeah? Anybody wanna drop in the chat what they, what, what struck them, what, what they felt? Any comments? Anyone wanna comment on what they saw? I know I was not, not really appalled. I was appalled more that it took some, some nerve for somebody to finally do that, but geez, it wasn't that surprising. Saw the first two with M L A Z call and it was ridiculous. Thank you Kelly. Any of our panelists wanna chime in?
So, hi Jessica Lefty She-Her. As a military member, the coins are used in military service for a very specific purpose. And the fact that the police are using these coins to basically dehumanize and give each other pats on the back is very, very disturbing and it should worry all of us.
Jessica, would you mind telling us what the purpose is in the military for all of these coins?
So traditionally, these were given like, uh, typically like in the old days for, for combat reasons, but they've kind of promoted, like, it kinda like graduated. I actually have a bunch that I'm gonna be clicking together during my thing. They give them for just, it's to give you, you know, motivation to do better. It's a prize to be won, so you get them for very specific things, so that, th- these are prizes for, you know, feeding people up, dehumanizing. It's, it's awful.
Right, so taking something that had some beauty and honor behind it and making a mockery of yet another beautiful thing, cultural item. Amazing.
Are they making mockery of it? I mean, it's a prize, so I think they're using the challenge coin in its function. They are rewarding what they value, which is violence and dehumanizing folks. And I think we need to remember that.
The history behind the coins is honestly violent, so it's, it's, it's based in violence.
Well, even more disgusting then. Um, anyone else wanna comment on the, uh, the segments that were aired by ABC 15 or, yeah, ABC 15?
I'm especially curious about how folks feel about it being revealed publicly that, uh, these officers are on the Brady list and they're lying under oath about what happened at the protest. Um, to get these folks, you know, politically prosecuted. It's absolutely wild. Oh, Jam is in the house. We can't wait to hear from you.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Hi everyone.
Nice to see you Jamar.
Good to see ya.
Alright, yeah, we're waiting for them to open up the room. Are we ready for this nonsense? So the two agenda items that they have on the agenda today are a dog barking ordinance, right? Patricia, and the one for number three was?
Electronic care for patients, something with the fire department. I mean, it could be useful. I'm sure we could talk about that for two seconds and then possibly give some attention to the fact that the police department who took an oath to protect and serve are lying under oath to put people away for having the courage to speak out against their violence.
Okay, I'm gonna start playing it now. Thanks Rhea.
Thank you.
Yes, Jeremy, you're correct. Our first speaker is Patricia Peglucia. Patricia, are you on the line? I'm sorry, she's not on the line. Uh, our next speaker is Camille Johnson. She, she is also not on the line. Our next speaker is Hannah Hayman. Hannah, are you on the line? They're also not on the line. Our next speaker, Samuel Merton. Samuel, are you on the line?
I am on the line.
Please proceed.
This year, um, officers have tried to shoot the mayor. They found a racist Facebook group. They're on video beating the shelter individuals. They have shot and violent protesters with rubber bullets, even their bodies scarred for life. The police chief has lied about how protests recovered and claimed they're a safe environment. While also allowing cops on the Brady list to be on the protest team and shoot at people just standing across the street. And now we're finding out about this racist neo Nazi challenge coin that the head of the department knew about for three years. And this has all been in less than 12 months' time. And doesn't even mention all the people shot and killed by Phoenix police since these marches began. Saying that this is gonna be, gonna be another investigation, it's not enough. We need real accountability. Officers need to be fired. Department heads need to resign. All of the community programs that the police department is trying to do, those need to be dissolved. We don't need police playing baseball without risk youth. We need to cancel that program. We don't need police talking with crisis networks. We need to cancel that program and bring in a Hoots side program like in Oregon where you actually talk with communities most at risk from police. We need a system where police do not investigate police. You need to revise the oath legislation so that there are independent investigations like were promised years ago. We need a system where police do not have unlimited funding and no accountability. Jerry Williams says that police are to be held to the highest standard of excellence. That had to be a joke because of what was going on in Phoenix there.
Our next speaker is John Luther. John, are you on the line? I'm sorry, he's not on the line. Our next speaker is Angelis Maldonado. Are you on the line?
I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, my name is Dr. Maldonado. I am the CEO of Ibarra Maldonado Law Group. And I was legal observer for most of the summer during the demonstrations. Um, and I wanted to, um, come on here, um, though I know I'm, I'm likely wasting my time, but I still think that it's important that I voice incredible concerns about, first of all, that, um, the idea that there's not even, you know, uh, like a task force or even a section to discuss everything that has happened, all the trauma that has been inflicted on our communities by the Phoenix Police Department. And I want us to first, um, create some context and remember why people were out in the streets in the first place. Um, people were out in the streets, let me remind you, because the police across the nation has been killing black people. And we are sick and tired of observing it and being bystanders and being complicit to this, to this absolute disregard for human life. And I want to let you all know that this city council is responsible and has blood on their hands for all of the people that have been killed by Phoenix police and continue to be killed. Now, I know there's gonna be other speakers and hopefully they think up about the coins and the racism and all of that, but that, all of that stuff is stuff that we already know. We have known this for years. We know this, that this Phoenix Police Department is racist. And all of you are responsible for upholding white supremacy. And the fact that you're doing absolutely nothing about it is disgusting. What needs to happen is you all need to drop the charges on all of the people who are out in the street. All they were doing was literally just standing in the street demanding the Black Lives Matter. And that's a reason for you all to go out in full force attacking people with violence, like literally hunting people. Police were running in the streets. I watched this. I recorded this and I saw so many abuses, human rights abuses.
Our next speaker is Ray Ibarra Maldonado. Ray, are you on the line? I'm sorry, he's not on the line. Our next speaker is Jamar Williams. Jamar, are you on the line? I'm sorry, he's not on the line. Our next speaker is Alina Maves. Alina, are you on the line? Okay, she is also not on the line. Our next speaker, Laurel Langmaid. Laurel, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Please proceed.
Okay, my comments are not against the police, but they are the result of the discussion at the last City of Phoenix Council meeting regarding the increase of beds at the Human Service Center and making the Andre House a low barrier shelter. I want to thank you for not allowing that to have the low barrier shelter to happen. And this should offload the police in the area of the Madison Pioneers Coalition Neighborhood. Being that you're public safety, I hope that you take the homeless situation under your wing and, and recognize the strategy that no one city or neighborhood bears the brunt of providing shelter services for individuals experiencing homelessness. But I was a bit dismayed at one councilman who was vocal about having the low barrier shelter, saying we should try something new and different. Putting the shelter at the human, another shelter at the Human Service Center is not something new and different. So I asked him some ideas and suggestions so that it's keeping the city's plan that no one bears the brunt of a homeless shelter. How about the Andre House be a temporary overnight storage for individuals who have too much stuff and can't get entry into the Central Arizona Shelter for night? How about have the Andre House be a temporary overnight kennel for animals that prevent entry for their owners into the cats? How about getting the drug dealers off the street? The dealers prey on the homeless individuals and, and hunt and pick on those that, well, see, it would be nice to have steps to make, keep the drugs out of the zone. Long term, wouldn't it be great if you can make the area drug free? How about having an area for, if you really wanted low barrier, there was one woman Ash talked about. People that, well, they can't get into cats because they have disabilities and they need routine medical monitoring such as people with diabetes. How about opening small shelters more like group homes around the City of Phoenix?
Hello, I believe, uh, Jamar Williams has connected now. Jamar, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you for the time. Um, the name of this committee is the Public Safety and Justice Committee. What we've recently seen is evidence, direct evidence that the police do do what we've seen them do all along. Take joy in the violent abuse and predation of our bodies. Uh, this is a recent quote I came across regarding challenge coins. These long form challenge coins often embrace the unpolished side of the warrior cop ethos. The violence, racism and impunity that have sparked our current reckoning with the American police culture. The name of this committee is the Public Safety and Justice Committee. In order to live up to that name, this committee should do something to address these concerning, uh, and, you know, vitriolic behaviors by the Phoenix Police Department. Councilman Nowakowski, in a conversation I was part of, you invoked the great name of Cesar Chavez. A name my own family reveres just as much as yours. What do you think he would be thinking about your inaction to address the violent nature of police behavior in our city? The racist and white supremacist nature of police behavior in our city. This is a problem that has gone too long without being appropriately addressed. Year after year, the City of Phoenix has let the police police themselves, has let the police investigate themselves, has let the police claim that they're addressing their own problems. And year after year, we've seen continued violence, continued racism and continued unaccountability and transparency. We have to address this in a manner that provides real justice and real public safety for the citizens of Phoenix. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marcus Reed. Marcus, are you on the line? I'm sorry, he's not on the line. Our next speaker is Jonathan Boe. Jonathan?
Uh, yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Uh, I just wanted to comment and say that you need to drop the charges immediately to protesters. Uh, slapping gang charges on them is just borderline unacceptable. I mean, you're just making up things at this point. If you wanna charge them for initiating anything, I mean, you need to look at it because we weren't the ones that showed up with guns, tanks and tear gas, you know? I just think that's really disgusting that y'all are doing that. Um, and then we just found out about the challenge coins and, I mean, it just furthers what we already know about the police is that they are white supremacists openly passing around Nazi memorabilia to celebrate the like abuses that they're doing to people here. I mean, it's just disgusting and if y'all really take yourselves seriously as a committee for justice and safety for people, then you need to do something. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tina Luna. Tina, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Please proceed.
Can you hear me? Thank you. Yeah, I, um, I also kind of shocked by the name of your, of the, your committee is, uh, you know, has justice in it. And I just wanted to ask, what have we learned from the ABC 15 reporting? We've learned that everything that black folks, that black folks have been telling us about the Phoenix PD is true. It's hard to accept. As a white woman with white privilege, it's easy for me to ignore black voices. And I have ignored them in the past. I'll admit it. It's hard to admit it, but what? But we don't even have to listen to black voices to see the truth here. We just, that reporting showed everything. It showed the cops lying on the stand. It showed how aggressive and violent they were, the protest. Um, just, it, it was just really incredible. And what we learned is that we need to listen to black voices. And if this report was about another city, we would be appalled. We'd be going, oh, look at them over there. But it's not another city. It's our city and we have to fix it. We cannot just sweep it under the rug. Lives are being lost and futures are being stolen by these officers. They must be held accountable. The report shows that the protesters are not violent gang members and that the police are not here to protect and serve. All the charges against the protesters must be dropped today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Miglio. Amy, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, I am.
Please proceed.
So, yeah, thank you. I'm here speaking today, um, from my hospital bed in Beijing, uh, because I can't sleep at night. Because the committee that, with, with the exception of Carlos Garcia, and I'm sorry, I, I'm speaking off the cuff here. I'm ill. I can't sleep at night because we, we warned you, we begged you over the last year, um, that these police were targeting protesters exercising their First Amendment rights. And as elected officials, I think that you should take the Constitution seriously and you should take your constituents seriously. And it should not have taken ABC 15 to have to go do digging and uncovering of grand jury, uh, you know, documents and scripts and digging through all this to prove what we already know and have been telling you guys. I mean, we elected y'all, right? You're supposed to be working for the people. And we live in a, in a area that is highly Latinx. Uh, the number of VIPOCs, I mean, it is frightening to me and I cannot sleep at night knowing that the so-called Committee on Justice cares more about the procedure for barking dogs than the fact, you should have immediately swipe, wiped, um, the whole schedule for today. And we should be talking about the fact that we know that Sergeant Moore, who has o- over thirty community members and friends of mine on trial on trumped up enhanced gang charges, people looking at thirty years, when we know that these people are playing a political game. They're mocking to make a coin of a protester being shot in the groin. Are you kidding me? Good night, left side. I mean, even if we don't even look at the a priori neo-Nazi part of it, just the fact that these people are supposed to be working for us and protecting our constitutional rights and they're making a joke of leaving somebody possibly unable to even, you know, procreate. Uh, it's not funny. None of this is funny. And I, and I can't sleep at night and I can't get healthy knowing that my community members that are VIPOC, I, I, I have to wake up and go to the store, not.
Thank you. And I believe Patricia Peglucia was able to connect. Patricia, are you on the line?
Thank you. Yes, I am. Good morning. It is another beautiful day here in the Valley of the Sun. And if you're white, you know that the neo Nazis running the Phoenix Police Department are hard at work to keep you safe and quash any and all dissent from protesters who dare rise up and demand the justice that they absolutely deserve. Since the global uprising and the murders of George Floyd and Deion Johnson, where the demand was simple and the only logical response to stop the police from killing and caging black folks, that we must defund the police. So today, we're at this Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee meeting. You all showed up and you think it's acceptable to have these random agenda items as a focus? So either you're completely unaware of the news that has finally broken publicly that Phoenix Police Department celebrates the violence that they perpetuate on the community and that they lie under oath to silence dissent, or you are aware and you don't even care enough to add this egregious vile police activity to the Public Safety and Justice Subcommittee agenda. Where else are we supposed to talk about this? First, Chief Jerry didn't know the coins existed, then she did, then hate speech wasn't okay, then she'll investigate. What an absolute insult to your constituents who pay your salaries. Let me be clear, an investigation, an oath or a CRB will not save black lives. An investigation or an oath will not change the toxic anti-black white supremacist culture that is the foundation of policing. It cannot prevent cops from lying under oath to politically prosecute people who demand their freedom from this oppressive violence. The entire system is designed to destroy and oppress black, brown and indigenous lives. Phoenix PD must be defunded and we demand that you all urge Maricopa County Attorney's Office to drop these false charges and political processes.
And our next speaker, I believe Hannah Hayman was able to connect. Hannah, are you on the line?
I'm on the line. Thank you for coming back to me. Uh, this Subcommittee must do nothing before white supremacist cops are fired and all charges against protesters are dropped. Today's agenda is a mockery of the pain you and your killer cops have caused in our communities. Our community leaders have been in the streets for years telling you the violent Phoenix police are hopelessly infected with white supremacy. And you have sat in these little meetings and done less than nothing. Even after ABC 15's blistering report of blatant neo-Nazi challenge coins, the city is not even meeting the bare minimum. All of the anti-black white supremacist cops involved must be immediately fired. We don't need an investigation to know that they're white supremacists. They came right out and they said it. You must also drop all charges against protesters. The false felony gang charges that were trumped up by these lying white supremacist cops need to be thrown out immediately. The city is complicit in violence against these brave people who have stood up to fight for. for black liberation. These obviously false charges should have never happened. And the rock goes all the way to the top. Chokehold Jerry Williams's job must be in question after reporting shows she knew about these coins for well over a year and did nothing. After cops were found to be posting in white supremacist Facebook groups, she did nothing. She is complicit in the brutality, and so are you by keeping her and all of her cronies on a payroll. Phoenix PD must be defunded and abolished. Drop all protest charges and fire all white supremacist cops today.
Chairman, that was our last speaker for public comment.
Now Garcia's gonna ask Jamar some questions.
Well, thank you all for, um, participating in the community, um, call to the public. Next, we have, um, Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, thank you so much. Matt, is Jamar Williams or Ray Barra on the line?
Uh, Mr. Williams was able to speak.
Is he still on the line? I wanted to ask him a follow-up question.
Oh, let, let me check.
Just a point of order, these are, um, public comments, and we're not supposed to have dialogue. Um, if you'd like, they can comment in one of the, um, agendaized items during public comments, and they can talk at that time.
All right, thank you, Chairman.
What you can do is you can direct staff to, um, basically, uh, tend to their, um, issue, and then later on, we can follow through with them, if you'd like to do that.
Can I make a comment on the public comments?
I believe so. I'm not sure, but I, I believe so.
Uh, Chairman Noakowski, Councilmember Garcia, I believe you are not supposed to comment on public comment as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so Bob Smith just confirmed that that is because of public meeting law. It's not posted for comment from council members, so...
Council, Councilmember Garcia, if you'd like to have a future agenda item on any of those issues or topics, you could suggest that at the end of the meeting, that'd be great.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll do that.
All right. And then we'll go to the next item, item number one, uh, minutes of the meeting. There's two cards. I'd like to hear those cards first. Matthew?
I think you're trying.
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Marisa Leva. Marisa, are you on the line? Please proceed.
Uh, yes, hi. I, um, must have registered under the wrong thing. I was calling in for the same reason everybody else was calling in. I'm pretty appalled that the recent ABC fifteen investigation isn't an agenda item, but it seems like you guys kind of cleared this up. And, uh, it's a little ridiculous that Carlos can't even comment on the public outcry, but as long as it's gonna be suggested as a, as a future agenda item, which will not take place for an entire month after today, it's, it's all ridiculous. But, you know, you guys aren't gonna do anything about it, so I yield my time.
Our next speaker is Brandon Wellington. Brandon, are you on the line? Brandon, please proceed. Chairman, it looks as though, as if Brandon doesn't have audio currently, so that was the last speaker on this item.
Uh, thank you, Matt. Um, motion to approve the minutes of January thirteen.
Second. Second.
We're staying on, friends, as you all registered to speak on item two and three, so it's gonna be super fun to hear these comments coming up.
Here's, the next item is item number two, um, the city of Phoenix barking dog, um, compliance process. This is something that councilmembers start, Deborah Stark's asked to put on the agenda. With that, um, we'll, we'll first go with the staff's report and then follow through with the seventeen cards that we have on the cycle.
Good morning, Chairman Noakowski, fellow councilmembers, uh, on the Public Safety Subcommittee. I'm Bob Smith with the City Prosecutor's Office. I also have with me Caroline Nye from our office and Esteban Gomez from our office. As you said, we're here to give a summary of the barking dog process. Ms. Nye has a PowerPoint presentation that she will go through for you.
Jesus. Rhea, can you mute this for a second? This is embarrassing. Can folks, um, drop in the comment how you're doing? I know that was a lot. We're gonna get to comments, um, that seventeen of us will be making, um, about the real issue, not this freaking purple and pink PowerPoint about how to complain about dogs when the police department is lying under oath to send people to prison. This is an absolute disgrace. Let us know in the chat. Hi, Miriam, good morning. Yeah, this is a joke. No one's surprised, but everyone's disgusted. Drop, just everybody drop in a word or a few statements just to, like, try to move it out of your system so you're not stuck holding this all day. We will detox soon enough. Fuck this, I think is a perfect sentiment. Chelsea's super pissed off.
Enraged.
Mm-hmm. They're literally showing a PowerPoint about this, and the councilmembers were acting like they didn't have any power or authority to change the rules. And who made the rules here?
Hmm. Well, and just the internal disrespect to shut Carlos down, too, when he just wanted to ask a few follow-up questions is pretty freaking disgusting.
Well, when the questions do not support white supremacy, it's, they're not gonna be asked.
And that whole tactic of starting the comments as early as they possibly could in hopes that people weren't ready to talk and weren't gonna call back in and go through all of that extra to have their voice heard?
That was so fucked up.
Super quick to turn a page, right? Cause why the hell not?
Mm-hmm. So now they're, they're giving criminal versus civil violations, so this is another way to imprison folks. That's great.
About a dark, a barking freaking dog.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely shameless. Yeah. Matt said meanwhile, these dog ordinances are used to over-criminalize black folks on the South Side.
Mm-hmm.
But did it seem like it was, um, the, the coin situation and, and the, the expose is going to be an agenda item next time? Or is that something Carlos has to request it and have it be approved?
Well, they said that, but I guarantee you, we will have to continue to push to get it on the agenda. We'll have to probably write letters to everyone, not just Carlos, um, because apparently it's, it's a tremendous challenge to add an agenda item that actually matters to this garbage Subcommittee. I mean, look how much time they're spending on this.
... the dog owner, a mediation recommendation, as well as the process for requesting a criminal complaint.
So Matt commented that, uh, Noakowski always continues to stuff, and so they'll, they'll try to delay this anyway. And the fact that he wouldn't let Carlos, um, Michelle, and the fact that they wouldn't let Carlos create dialogue, it's such a hell for their politics, and now this barking dog business is just a shake-my-head moment. Fucking PowerPoint about something completely meaningless. Absolutely.
How to talk to your neighbors, to exercise your dog, to be mindful of the access your dog has...
Did they discuss it before they, um, open comments? Is that what you're saying, Matt?
Say again?
I was gonna ask, like, are they, is, is Matt saying that Noakowski will, um, uh, discuss, like, make it be like a discussed item before, like, um, they allow the public comments to roll on?
I think what I took from the comment was that he's just gonna try to stuff it down to delay it as long as possible, probably in hopes that it'll just blow us... Matt, if you wanna unmute and speak on what you, what you intended?
Oh, I didn't realize I can unmute. Um, sorry. Yeah, so Noakowski, especially in this Public Safety, like, Subcommittee, he loves to continue items, therefore, we don't hear public comment, there is no discussion. Um, he's done that in, like, recently, uh, and, and I, I, I believe it's when he sees there are a lot of comments, um, they'll do a real quick, like, vote to continue, and then we just won't hear it for, for thirty days.
And they don't need to mention that out loud with community members online? They don't need to mention that this item's been continued?
They will, they'll do it real quickly. And even if, like, say the agenda has, like, fifteen items, like, right at the beginning of the meeting, kind of like they did today when they just started going through names, somebody will make a motion to continue that item, uh, so they won't hear it that day, and then, you know, everybody that's on the line or that has, you know, requested speaker, left comments, won't be heard at all. They love to do shit like that.
It's unbelievable. We've said, we've sat here for about six minutes now, and they're still not done with this bullshit-ass pink and purple PowerPoint about a freaking dog and couldn't make the time or the effort to give space to what really matters to folks.
You know, what's, what's crazy to me, too, is that, what's wild to me is that they, you know, they know that an officer who ju, who's, who basically provided testimony in a court of law to sustain all these charges against these protesters is involved with this challenge coin that they know is problematic, that is, that is white supremacist, and no one gave a damn. Like, we're, we're talking about barking dogs, like, if the city really cared about justice, if this was about its name, they would be doing something immediately, notifying the county attorney's office, saying, hey, this is a serious investigation, these officers are super problematic, you know? There's even crossover from some of these officers into the Plainview project, um, when we learned about all those problematic, um, supremacist Facebook posts, um, a year or so ago, um, and previous Brady crossover. And no one on this panel, I guarantee you, could explain the importance of Brady and why it's important to notify the Maricopa County Attorney's Office immediately so that something can be done with these, uh, protest cases.
We're gonna jump to comments now, cause they're on. Thank you, Jama. Let's listen up.
Vanessa, are you on the line? I'm sorry, it looks as though we may not be getting audio from Vanessa. Our next speaker is April McHugh. April, are you on the line?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, good morning. This commit, this morning, uh, continues to get richer. Deborah Stark, I'm a constituent of your district, and I can't believe you've, uh, selected this agenda item to be on, uh, our agenda this morning. I can't believe the prosecutor's office is here discussing barking dogs when you have criminal activity happening right in your office. Do you know the difference between true crime and harm? You all love the silence. We're here discussing barking dogs so the residents of Moon Valley can occupy their second homes on a golf course in silence? Why you stay silent on the fact that we have neo-Nazi activity in our police force?
Please, uh, keep your comments to the item.
Demand that you drop the false charges against prosec, uh, pro...
Oh, I'll cut her off.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Spencer.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hello, my name is Jessica Spencer. I'm a Navy veteran using my GI Bill to achieve a degree in social work. Now, do you hear the sound? Do you hear that? That's not the sound of dogs. Do you hear that? Those are the coins I earned during my military service. These coins carry a lot of tradition and are used as banter for the Phoenix PD to encourage racist, violent...
Wow. They are just gonna keep cutting folks off, but it's good, we're here, we have fifteen to go.
Your next speaker is, uh, Jessica Spencer, and please keep your comments to the agenda's topic. My apologies. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Venable. Elizabeth, are you on the line? I believe she is no longer on the line. Our next speaker is Tina Luna. Tina, are you on the line?
Yes, I am on the line. Um, I'd like to know why this group is talking about, about barking dogs when we have citizens that are facing false charges brought on by white supremacist cops that are on the Brady list.
Tina, please keep your comments to the agenda. Our next speaker is Benjamin Lewis.
Matt, Matt, Chairman?
Yes, Councilmember Betty?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, um, the, the folks that are, I know that I have found it, talking to a lot of my constituents, that when they call in, you know, for a certain item, um, it's been, it's been very confusing, and they sometimes, um, they sometimes call in for the, they, they don't know how to sign up for the right items. You know, folks that are not talking about, about the dog barking item, can we put them back into public comment so they can actually, cause they've been waiting there for a minute? Can we then put them so they can do their comments at the end? If, I, I get it that we can, that we need to follow, um, the order that we've always done, but can we put those folks back into public comment so that they can say their comments? Um, because I know that I've had constituents that have found it confusing, and, and they have not been allowed to speak because they signed up on, on the wrong item. Do you think that's okay?
Chairman Noakowski, members of the council, I would have to defer to whether or not the chair wants to do that. If the chair wants to open public comment back up, I suppose we could do that. Um, and then we could have Matt ask every speaker that's listed for the item that they've signed up for, whether or not they want to speak on that item, or if they would like to make a general comment to the public.
Uh, we do have a call to the public at the very end, right after the, um, item four, the... So there's room, there's room there if individuals need to speak.
So what we can do is we can ask each speaker that is listed, that is remaining on item two, whether or not they would like to be held in queue for the general call for the public, or if they'd like to speak on the item that we are technically on, which is the barking dog ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Then, uh, Mr., uh, or Tina Luna? Were you on the line, Tina?
Who did you call?
Tina Luna.
Oh.
Tina, were you wishing to speak on the barking dog ordinance, or would you like to be added to public comment at the end of the meeting?
I would like to be added to the comments at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Benjamin Lewis is our next speaker. Benjamin, are you on the line?
Good. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Were you wishing to speak on the barking dog ordinance, or would you prefer to speak at public comment at the end of the meeting?
You know, I have a lot to say about the barking dog ordinance, but based on what's happened at this meeting today, I would also like to comment on something outside of the barking dog ordinance. So I can keep it to barking dog right now if you, if council prefers.
You please.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, hello, I'm here speaking today as a District Four voter, a homeowner, and an active participant in my neighborhood. I love living here in Phoenix. I'm a proud Phoenician, encouraging my friends, family, and acquaintances to visit and move here. I'm an ASU employee, a small business owner, and an alumni of Carnegie Mellon University. My concern with this service is, how can I call on the city services if I don't know what kind of service member is going to show up? For example, I have two dogs. I do mediate with my neighbors. Let's say, for example, um, one of my dogs is out of, one of, uh, one of my neighbor's dogs is out of line, uh, can I be sure that the city won't send a, uh, neo-Nazi mediator to deal with the situation? Um, based on my trust issues of city services here, I find it very hard to trust in funding that we give to the city through our tax dollars and through our, uh, property taxes to go to, um, services that actually serve our community. So far, it seems like a vast majority of the city budget is going to things that harm our community. Is going to things that harm our community, whereas uh harm mitigation services are not being uh funded at all, so. How can we expect that this service won't have um embedded neo-Nazis, embedded harm. Um reversed charges, uh assault on the community, I just, I, it's very hard for me to trust. This barking dog thing when we see how poorly the city budget is being spent in general. Um and also I have a couple of questions uh for city council since this is the only time that we can ask them. Um first, uh city council, do you mind that we have one hundred officers who are on the Brady list?
If you could, please keep.
I would like to talk about barking dogs. Are the Brady list officers gonna be involved in this barking dog issue?
Could, could we please move on to the next speaker? Mister Martinez, are you on the line?
Oh, I am, but.
Would you prefer? Are you?
I'd like to be moved to the public comment at the end because I don't support your constitution, your unconstitutional office dog. I'd like to talk at the end, Zelda.
Alright, thank you, sir. Helen Mendizabal is our next speaker, Helen, are you on the line?
Okay, I'll be right back, are you, how you doing Jamie?
Helen? Were, were you hoping to speak on the barking dog?
Helen, do you wanna speak on the barking dogs or would you prefer to wait to the end for general public comment?
It looks as though we may have lost audio for Helen, we'll move on to the next speaker, Malik Shabazz, Malik, are you on the line?
I am on the line.
Were you wishing to speak on the barking dog ordinance?
Well, yes, I think that a good question to have regarding these barking dogs is, we need to ask, why do these dogs bark? That is the core of the question, what is it that they want, more often than not, they are trying to communicate. To express a desire to be heard because for whatever reason, their concern's not receiving the attention that they deserve. I'd like the rest of my comments to be reserved for the end with the rest of the pack.
Well played.
Our next speaker is Michelle Mayer. Michelle, are you on the line? Michelle, yes, we can, were you wishing to speak on the barking dog ordinance?
Um, yes, I would like to comment the ridiculousness of this agenda item and the fact that. We are not able to log any additional comments until the end and the uh. Carelessness of even wanting the opinions of your constituents as the committee of public safety and justice. It's imperative that you convene to have meaningful discussion and create action plans which involve the community you serve. Phoenix PD needs to be held accountable with independent review boards, not with other cops.
We can add you to the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Avery McGinnis, Avery, are you on the line? I'm sorry, it appears as though Avery is not on the line, our next speaker is Katie Gibson. Katie, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Did you wish to speak on the barking dog ordinance or be moved to the end of the agenda?
No, I was confused, I would prefer to speak during the general call to the public, please.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Estrella Alderado, Estrella, are you on the line? I'm sorry, it appears she is not on the line, our next speaker is Brandon Valentin. Brandon, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Gerald Heron. Gerald, are you on the line? Yes, were you wishing to speak on the barking dog ordinance or to be moved to the end of the agenda?
May I go ahead?
Uh I, I didn't hear exactly what you said, but if you're wishing to speak on this item, please proceed.
Uh yes, can you hear me clearly though?
Yes, now I can.
Thank you, I appreciate it, so first of all, thank you Councilwoman Stark for bringing this, thank you Bob Smith and especially. Caroline Nye, uh and uh, you know, unfortunately, what it is, the burden is still. Placed on the plaintiff, not on the defendant, so one of the requirements is to talk to your neighbors now, Phoenix PD. Are reporting the rise of domestic violence and as a neighborhood association and block watch lead, I find that when I'm on. A, you know, a neighborhood patrol and I see an adult that's doing something wrong. Dog off leash, uh allowing their dog to defecate and urinate in other people's yards, their reaction is hostile. And the, the case that I did actually get uh to court, uh three times I spoke to that woman, I recorded. Uh in, with a video, she was angry, she shook the cages off her carport, she gave me. A double uh, you know, middle finger salute, she then went when she was subpoenaed, she went around the neighborhood. Petitioning her neighbors and and maligning me, she brought twelve character witnesses. To prove, I don't know what character witnesses has to do with barking dogs. And there were people there that I had never met who came angry because I was filing a barking dog petition. And one of those witnesses was so hostile that he was required to be escorted out of the court. By P- Phoenix PD and myself and my two witnesses were asked to stay inside the court for safety until that person left. So to be asking us and requiring us to go and talk to a neighbor, I think has lots of uh, lots of problems. The fact that you need three witnesses is ridiculous and my case didn't proceed because.
Barking dog ordinance, wow.
That she didn't feel that she could prove on that day, on that hour, on that minute, and that uh.
Our next speaker is Anisha Groves, Anisha, are you on the line?
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, did you wish to speak on the barking dog ordinance item?
Uh please put me at the end in the public comments, thank you.
Chairman, that's the last registered speaker on this item.
Chairman Noakowski, I want you to know, we do have forty-two written comments as well, however, most of those comments do not pertain to the barking dog ordinance. They also relate to police issues.
Thank you so much, um is there any comments or concerns for my colleagues? Seeing no, none, this is basically information and discussion only, go to item number three.
Now we have to listen to FIRE do their report, but when it comes to comment three, everyone stay on comments so we can disrupt their meeting. And then when they go to hang up on you, tell them, okay, I'll make my comment at the end, thank you for being here, hang in there with us.
Wouldn't be a bad idea for somebody to demand that they be heard now and not waste more of their personal time too. Might get cut off maybe not. Okay, y'all drop in the chat how it feels to have this like high school student council level parliamentary procedure, hold your voices from saying what needs to be heard. Because I remember being student council president and we had more leeway for, you know, open voices than this bullshit ass meeting. The council's toned it, so thank you.
Yep, Zarita, of course you were class cuz we all knew that.
I mean, even in elementary school, we learn the same rules that they're following now, this is just archaic and disgusting. Hey Matt, welcome to the. I mean, just the sheer disrespect of how much time people are wasting people's time, number one, sitting through these boring ass PowerPoints. And then on top of it, like you're here to make comment to these committees that are here to serve a purpose and for what? So they can make you sit down and put on pause and take more of your personal time for them to what, fluff their own feathers? You're out of order, you're out of order ugly and ugly, Matt, you need to run for office then, cuz I would love to hear that public comments.
This is uh, it's especially disgusting when people's lives are on the line um with those recent um, you know, protest charges, it's, it's. It's completely ridiculous and, and shootings in our cities are going up in twenty twenty, they, they went up. From the year before, so we're talking about, we're talking about literally rogue, violent rogue police officers and we have this. This uh, the antiseptic city procedure that we have to watch. While our family members are being taken from us and we, our, 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 our lives are being permanently impacted by. These crazy charges.
That's actually a really good point, it, it saddens me that the subject of, the topic or subject has been this, this coin to make it a more poignant point. For us to enter the space when really it's about people's lives who are being, you know, prosecuted illegally like there. And that's the bigger point, but in order for us to be heard, we have to make it about this coin to o- open the door to get the real point through, which is disgusting. In and of itself. Yeah, how's everyone feeling, I feel like maybe we should take some time to take a deep breath in purpose of love on ourselves because that was a lot of. Um for a lot, I mean, I should probably be classier, but that's a lot of shit that we were forced to swallow, so why don't we take a cleansing? You know, drink of cleansing water and just take a deep breath for, cuz there's a little bit more we have to endure. And while we're taking a break from this mess, I also wanna give major kudos to those fast thinkers um that were able to spend their time. Um and make some really poignant points. And play the game the way uh we had to play it, so good, good on you.
Yeah, Ben, especially you, you win funniest twist today, thank you so much for getting those comments heard. And just remember everybody, when we get to comment three, we wanna stay on until she tries to cut you off and then say you'll go to the end. Cuz the disruption is what we're looking for, we have to show them how ridiculous this public safety and justice subcommittee meeting is. By disrupting it because they're not listening any other way. Make sure you're taking care of yourselves, friends, if you need to get up, take a stretch break, get some water, yeah, and who said that dogs bark for a reason? Is that person on this call because they're not being heard?
I'm not sure, but what about the, um are those Brady listed, uh police officers, the ones that are gonna come call, almost dog barking calls? Yeah, that was epic.
Oh my gosh.
So good.
They're not Brady listed, that's the problem, that's the huge problem. And the city can do something about that, that's the other problem, they could, they could call up MCAO right now, but. Um eh, this is how the system, this is how the system makes it more difficult for us to achieve freedom and liberation. Is that they compartmentalize everything and then they, and then they put these institutional barriers into everything like. And, and this, this is when it gets real ridiculous, right, like the, this, a member, an elected member of this committee. Told an elected member of this committee, you cannot speak. This is how ridiculous it's gotten, in, in separate com- compartmentalized government institutions. They're creating these individual, these, these uh, these other barriers in each uh governmental institution. To silence dissent, to um fortify the restrictions on our liberty, the oppression of our people. And the predation of this, the police state, it's disgusting.
It's awful.
And the MCAO that says, you know, they serve justice or whatever their little slogan is, they have this information. They are, they know about these cops that should be on the Brady list, they're doing nothing about it and it takes Dave Bischoff. Do a news report to reveal it to the public for something to be set into place to change this, it's absolutely disgusting. And the whole system, I mean, it is set up and designed this way, so that's why we have to stay on these boring ass calls. And push them to change. Rhea, where are they, are they still doing this stupid report?
Uh, yep, they're still on the PowerPoint talking about modern patient impressive, they, what? A modern page, patient encounter process, data collection and reporting capabilities.
They need the city council's input for that, isn't that like that office in the fire department somewhere that you could just check that box?
I guess, I mean, I'm sure it is probably like more important than the barking dog thing, but I mean. Read the room, seriously.
I, I also wanna give a quick kudos to Jessica with the, the clinging of the coin sound at the beginning of your, of your time. Let them know, seriously, let them know. I'm usually so sparkly and shiny, this has really been triggering and indulged a lot of my sparkle today, this is horseshit, it's absolute horseshit. It never ceases to amaze me how much um, a drop of toxicity could take away your joy, then they wonder why people don't bother to um. To spend their time trying to wr- wr- right wrong, so um, as part of, you know, the mouse live team, I'm super grateful that y'all are taking the time to. Uh to be here and to sp- share the space together to make it as l- as less toxic as possible, as least toxic as possible. Um, at least we could spread the toxicity amongst all of our positivity and hope that shit goes away, right?
It will, and just remember, I hope you all can stay on because we do have the magical and radiant Sean. Here to lead us through a detox, so as soon as we get through comments on this exciting item number three and the. Final comments, cheers Matt, then we will get through to our detox and we're gonna be great.
That's right. Rhea, they still on the PowerPoint?
Yep, talking about dropdown boxes and stuff.
Oh, by the way, we paid for the time it took for them to put that BS uh PowerPoint together too, just FYI. They could be, I'd rather them go up a tree and take it out of a tree instead of spending their time. So yeah, anybody else wanna talk about how they're feeling in the, in the chat? This is a lot to take in. I also super encourage you, if you do have time at the end to let them know how disrespectful it is to number one, cut off a count, as fellow council member. And then to waste more of your time, like yeah, thank you for giving me my time back, you know what I mean? So, I, I appreciate y'all. Um, what is the number, the number four, for what? I think I lost where you're going, that's all good. I have a meeting at eleven, so I'll jump off before then, thank you for coming Tina, thank you so much.
Um, do we maybe wanna talk about uh, maybe we can talk about Aleister Dell's statement about this, by the way?
Oh, hi, doggy, yeah, please.
Or, I don't know, Jamar, do you wanna go, yeah?
Yeah, I can talk about that, the um, I, I.
Yeah, I can talk about that. The, um, I, I, you know, I'm, I can't, it's hard for me to read these statements anymore. Like, yeah, I, I can't even get past the first couple of words of them because they drip with insincerity. Um, they are disingenuine and they do not reflect the, anywhere close to what the truth of the practices of these institutions are actually doing. You know, not only do we see with, um, the county attorney's office to say that they're concerned of this behavior, that, that's utter, that couldn't be anywhere further from the truth. They, they're laughing at this. They're gonna laugh all the way to trial. Um, unless we put real pressure on them to, to do what's right, um, for, for our people. You know, to hear plea, to hear plea statement in addition to MCAO say, we're concerned with this behavior. They're laughing as they write a statement like that and they're hoping that it's going to convince people who, who haven't seen what we've seen, who, who don't know what we know to stay on their side or to not turn on them. And we can't, we can't let that effort succeed. Yeah, someone put in the chat, we don't condone hate. They are the purveyors of hate and violence. Uh, they, they, they are the manifestation of hate in our city. They're the true source of hate and in a lot of senses, MCAO is too. And you can see it in, in manufacturing gang charges for people saying ACAB or even Black Lives Matter possibly if they, if they take it to that extent. That is hate. That's, that's not justice. That's not fairness. It's disgusting. The, the, the county attorney's office can drop charges on all the protesters right now. The, the day this story broke, they should have done that. That was the right thing to do. Um, if we had a different county attorney in that position, it would have happened immediately. We may have never even been in this situation if we had a different county attorney. It's disgusting to see a statement like that come from an office whose job, like was mentioned earlier, is quote unquote to, um, to, to, to do justice for, for our people. That's why we say the system isn't it broken, it was designed this way because the system, the system is to, is designed to prey on those most marginalized and then turn it and act like that's what justice is. And that's why we have to redefine justice. That's why we have to introduce practices of transformative justice for our people. And that's why we have to defund the police and read and, and define the difference between crime and harm. Uh, because they're not doing it for us and, and their definitions are going to only keep us oppressed and marginalized. The, the, this idea of Brady information, right? This idea that MCAO has to wait for the Phoenix Police Department to conduct an investigation before they can make a decision about Brady information is completely preposterous. The constitutional underpinnings of Brady information is to ensure.
Sorry, sorry, Jamar. We're gonna, we'll go back right to that though. Thank you.
Ask the question.
No, let, let, um, listen to the cards first. I, I can't wait.
Already. So Matt, if you wanna go ahead and continue with the cards, that'd be great.
Chairman Nowakowski, uh, before Matt calls the name, I just wanna reiterate to our callers that if you are calling in on item three, please let Matt know and we can have you speak to that. If you do want to have your comments held to the end to speak on general.
Everybody speak on item three. Make your comment.
For the council members and staff.
And our first speaker signed up for this item is Russell Facente. Russell, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Were you wishing to speak on this fire department item?
Yes, I am.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So, um, I believe that this, uh, the EPCR is necessary and will save lives. Uh, but, uh, I'm speaking today. My concern is with the uh, budgeting and financing of this, of this system. Um, it's obviously an expensive system to implement, contain and train. And, uh, although they said that they're on budget, my concern is where that budget is coming from. And to me, there's only one responsible way to, um, to pay for this. First, uh, we need to fire all of the neo-Nazi challenge coin officers and take away.
Keep your comments directed to this item.
The taxpayers are.
We can move you to the end of the meeting if you would like. Our next speaker signed up for this item is Jisoo Kim. Jisoo, are you on the line?
Yes, hello.
Yes. Were you wishing to speak on this fire department item?
Yes.
Please proceed.
So I thought that was a great presentation. I totally agree that improving our healthcare system, um, in its various aspects is of utmost importance. No doubt about that. Cleaning up data, not using handwritten notes all the time. I totally agree. I work in data myself. That's what I do in my day job too. But speaking of labor, I have to call out the longstanding cultural tendency to put firefighters, coworkers and police all on the same level. Doesn't really make sense to me to have this item on the agenda for public safety and justice when we have so many other pressing concerns like the ABC 15 investigation.
Please keep your comments to this agendized item or we can move to the end of the meeting. Our next speaker is Tina Luna. Tina, I believe you were signed up to speak at the end of the meeting.
I'd like to speak on this item also.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, I agree with the other callers. I think this is a very important issue, but I think funding is really, um, a part of the matter. Uh, if we defund the racist white supremacist police, we should be able to fund funds for grounds in the fullest.
Our next speaker is Rin Orr. Rin, are you on the line? It does not appear as though they are on the line. Our next speaker is Kelly Quonk. Kelly, are you on the line? It does not appear as if Kelly is on the line. Our next speaker is Kalixta Velazquez. Kalixta, are you on the line?
On the line. I am on the line.
Were you wishing to speak on this? I think you may need to turn down the volume.
Did that work?
I believe so. Um, were you wishing to speak on this fire department item or to be moved to a public comment at the end of the meeting?
Um, I would like to be moved to public comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lucy Lou. Lucy, are you on the line? I believe, uh, chairman, that that was the last speaker registered for this item.
Thank you, Matt. I believe, um, council member, um, Betty would like to speak. It's all yours.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, chairman. So first of all, I just wanna say thank you for a great, um, presentation. Thank you, Assistant Chief Scott Walker, um, for all of your work on this and for everyone's work on this. Um, but I just had one question. Um, you guys spoke about being able to do opioid, opioid reports. And in our, in our district, that has been a big, a big issue and something that we've been dealing with for a minute. Can you guys expand a little bit on how you guys would do that reporting and how that would work and how we could get those reports by district?
Chairman Nowakowski and Councilman Regardotto, thank you for the questions. So like Captain World shows you, the one field we had created a demonstration on current pandemic, we could create a very similar field on.
Yeah, Rhea, let's not listen in on this nonsense. Um, we can go back if they open up the comments again for folks.
So Patricia, does anyone know what the process is to maybe write in about how, um, egregious and horrible the treatment of their constituencies and making them wait and pushing back and, you know, pushing procedure that is it would, how, how do we make our voices heard that this is such a supreme waste of time?
Well, remember, we have contact, um, with all of the council members and we have been speaking with them, um, and asking that this become an agenda item. No one's listening. So, um, really what we need to do is get all of these terrible council people voted out of office and get new council members in that will actually listen to us. Um, because this is all unbelievable. Um, so I think really what everybody should do today is email each of these four council members that are on this public safety subcommittee and CCinfo@masslibaz.org. We'll get those directions in the chat and tell them how absolutely unacceptable it is that this subcommittee, which is literally the only place we have to talk about real issues of public safety and justice. And they are ignoring the community. People are literally being murdered by paid public servants. And then those paid public servants are lying under oath to prosecute the folks that are speaking out against them. I mean, it's absolutely unconstitutional and unacceptable and we're the only ones that are gonna make it move because had we not been here today, my friends, this city council meeting would have talked about a barking dog ordinance and then this information, whatever system, and then they would have went on about their day happily. While people are facing years in prison because they spoke out against Phoenix Police Department for killing people. It is absolutely unacceptable. Comments again, Rhea? No? Yes?
Um, yeah, so we're just lagging, so it should start now. We can just start listening.
Thank you.
So thank you so much. And, um, with that, we'll go to item number four that was withdrawn and we're into call to public.
Thank you, chairman. Our first speaker, uh, if she is on the line, would be Elizabeth Venable. Just a moment. I'm sorry, she is not on the line. Our next speaker is Tina Luna. Tina, are you on the line?
Yes, I, yes, I am online. Thank you for giving me some time. Um, when is the council? Would, sorry, I'm just, I'm so upset by this. And cutting off Carlos and not letting him ask questions. It's like, what is this forum for if it's not to share ideas and try to improve everyone's lives? But what I wanted to specifically comment on was if the city really believes that the conduct of these officers is unacceptable and then what are they gonna do? What are you folks gonna do as a, this public safety and justice committee to remedy the harm that these officers are causing? They're seeking plenty of gang charges against protesters. These are young people that are just fighting for their lives because the Phoenix Police Department is the deadliest in the nation. And they're fighting for their lives. Felony charges, something that will affect their whole lives. It's so unjust. It's, it's, it's just a travesty and the false empathy from the city officials is really annoying. They are just talking, oh, we're, we're concerned, we're, and, and that's not what they are. We don't accept hate. It, the Phoenix Police Department is all about hate. And we're not gonna let this go. We're not going to shut up. And you will hear us. And we want all of the charges dropped against all of our brothers and sisters that have been charged with these trumped up gang charges and that.
Oh, wow.
Our next speaker is Marcus Reed. Marcus, are you on the line?
Yeah, I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Yeah, so, um, you know, the, the spirit of my call, um, is to, um, particularly, um, call out uh, people like, uh, Chairman, um, I mean, Councilman, uh, Michael Nowakowski. Um, just really disappointed, um, you know, just as someone that, uh, would call himself a Christian, but just continually see the Phoenix Police just trump trump up bull crap charges on people, build challenge coins to, to show that they're happy with their, um, their racism and for him to, to not do anything about it. You know, Ball's been in court a couple of times to get things changed in the city. And the legacy that I feel like he's behind is very embarrassing and disgusting. To see him standing one day in front of a, uh, uh, a street sign trying to commemorate a black life and just watch the Phoenix Police just trounce all over black lives is the biggest bit of hypocrisy that I've ever seen in my entire life. Um, and, um, like the previous caller said, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna let you guys off the hook from all this stuff that's going on with the Phoenix Police. And, um, you know, whether it be the ballot box or whether it be, um, just here at every single evening, um, to make sure that, uh, things change, you know, you continually hear from me. I yield the rest of my time.
I believe Vanessa DeCarlo was able to connect. Um, Vanessa, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Ah, you know you have a problem when a TV network needs an entire series to cover all of the corruption because there is so much police corruption of you, abuse that won't fit into a sing, a single TV segment. However, we have plenty of time to talk about barking dog ordinances. Absolutely unacceptable and absurd. And I, and think about it, this is just what we know, or rather, this is what you knew and the public is now learning. The public can view video, audio evidence that shows that the Brady List officers' bad behavior never ended and is still going on. And, and they're continuing their violence, targeting and arresting protesters. Many of the same officers who targeted protesters also made souvenirs, served in leadership positions and assessed gang charges. So the people who are supposed to be the most knowledgeable about gangs are literally relishing in violence. Keeping souvenirs which only serve to relive the memory of their violence and dehumanize protesters they are targeting. It is seriously demented that you are allowing protesters to be targeted by a gang of neo-Nazi police, or as I call them now, regular police. And the independent investigation, I knew it was a problem when you could practically feel the glee seeping from please social media posts. And I knew there would be neither independent nor investigative measures. Rather, this second faux investigation, cuz already did one, will be conducted by a law firm that has been contracted and serving the, the city of Phoenix for a variety of needs, including labor contracts, presumably for the city and police unions, as well as statewide legislative lobbying for public safety and criminal justice for the city of Phoenix. The response of the city of Phoenix could be summarized as improper and ethical corrupts. Unlike other issues, this will be swept under the rug. The question is, what will you do, council members, with this information? Your officers, your Brady List boys are on tape actively learning and saying, repeating.
Our next speaker, if he remained on the line, was Benjamin Lewis. Benjamin, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Just to kind of rip off what, uh, the last, uh, neighbor was saying, uh, this national news just picks off of local news and it's a juicy story. It's gonna be in the Times next week. We're just here talking to you about it now cuz it's something that needs to be fixed. And after hearing Phoenix Fire talk about all the amazing things that they're gonna be able to do by adopting Google Sheets, it's frustratingly and glaringly obvious how simple tracking would make our citizens safer and our police officers more accountable for their actions. I don't think anyone can argue against having a police force that follows the same rules as everyone else. I don't think anyone can argue against having a police force that follows the same rules as everyone else. And the gist of what we are asking for right here is that simple next step. With this in mind, I have a few simple yes or no questions I would like to ask council members. Recognize that I was cut off when I was legally allowed to do this, and I don't even think they're still here listening. So, first, do you mind that we have one hundred officers who are on the Brady List? Second, what do you think is an appropriate ratio of employment for peace officers who have previously violated their oath, been caught and charged? Right now, it's three and a half percent. That seems high. Third, do you have a way to flag or filter statements made by cops who have already been identified as dishonest past charges? Seems like that would be a simple, easy thing to do. Four, are you aware that the charges brought against protesters have been based entirely on the testimony from cops who are on the Brady List, breaking rules, misdirection, and lies? Fifth, do you have power as a city council member to bring about change, or have you discovered that being in this role is mostly ceremonial? And six, I am very disappointed that council chair feels it is appropriate to cut off another council member. We are here trying to be heard, and you won't even let our elected official speak. Council is our only representation in this chamber. So the question is, is Phoenix a democracy, or isn't it? And I would love to hear back from anyone who's still listening.
Our next speaker is Phil Martinez.
Yes, ma'am, I am on the line. Uh, my name is Phil Martinez. I'm a resident. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Phil Martinez, and I'm a resident of Phoenix, Arizona. And I cannot believe that we are sitting here talking about barking dogs and thinking about making it easier to report people who have barking dogs than it is to talk, than to report police officers who are terrorizing our neighborhoods. A lot is being said about this coin, but nothing is being said about the man who's, who is behind the leadership of this coin, Benjamin Moore, who was caught. Craig Biscapine showed that this man wrote, received an email that specifically stated that they wanted to dip a coin, protect this interrupter, which is violation of every single person's rights. Oh, and you guys sit here, and you guys are okay with it. You know what? If I worked that close with racists, I would know. So I'm not going to sit here and let you guys tell other people what is wrong. Carlos, I commend you for standing up for what is right. Every other person on that council, you all voted, gave those persons a, a, a speech, and you guys gave them a right. And you guys all gave them money last week for approach, for uh beating up protesters. So it's ridiculous that you guys are sitting here talking about dogs instead of talking about what's really serious in this, in this country, in this city. We are leading the country in police deaths, and you guys are to blame for it. We have told you guys over and over again, the change needs to happen. Carlos, I hope you stay, but everybody else, Betty, I was so disgusted. I respected you very much, ma'am, but you voted to give them their right pay. You should have stood fast, because not even days later, you find out that same unit received that pay, and that officer went and took that pay, went to Hawaii on vacation, and you guys are behind it. So you gotta be stopped.
Our next speaker is Helen Mendizabel. Helen, are you on the line?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Hi, uh, Town City Council. Um, I just wanted to make my voice heard. Um, I really feel an independent investigation is not enough to remedy the debt and deceit that is in the violence within uh Phoenix Police Department. Um, there's enough evidence right now to every police report and every piece of testimony that came from that tactical squad. Um, the cops that are still assigned to protest are lying and attempt to silence and um dissent against them. Use your power and office afford, that, that office affords you, and do your job. Please demand that all drop, uh, all charges are dropped um, and end this political prosecution now. I can't believe we're talking here about barking dogs instead of the racism that's being upheld in Phoenix Police Department. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Malik Chabaz. Malik, are you on the line?
In two thousand and six, the FBI warned of white supremacy within American police departments. The articles are Google search away. A hundred years ago, the American white man used to put on a white sheet and use a bloodhound against Negroes. Today, they have taken off the white sheet and put on police uniforms and traded in the bloodhounds for bullets, and they're still doing the same thing. All of the human rights problems during this country's history have created a situation where America right now is moving toward a police state, and those same police, an organization originally created to hunt down escaped slaves and protect ruling class capital, have been infiltrated by Nazis and other white supremacists. Now finally, our city, the tenth most diverse city in the country, is home to those reside within it. Now, we elected you to run this house, and if a person is not ready to clean their house up, they shouldn't have a house. They should catch on fire and burn down.
Our next speaker is Michelle Mayer. Michelle, are you on the line? Michelle, are you on the line? It looks as though we may not have audio for Michelle. Our next speaker is Avery McGuinness. Avery, are you on the line? I'm sorry, it looks as though Michelle may have been able to connect.
Hello, hello. I, can you hear me?
Yes, Michelle.
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm here. Thank, thank you. Um, as I stated before, the Committee of Public Safety and Justice, you know, really needs to be addressing and having meaningful discussions with each other and with your constituents who have elected you to this position. Um, you need to involve the community you serve and hold Phoenix Police accountable with the independent review boards, not with other cops. Hold them accountable for their atrocities, which have been recently been made even more public via ABC politically charged news special. The charges need to be dropped against these people who were exercising their First Amendment rights. Repercussions for the officers who are lying under oath need to be implemented, and where is the accountability? Because we haven't seen any. My question to you is, are you here just as a group of yes-men, or are you here to serve the people of your city? This is not politics. This is ethics, and you need to reevaluate your approach to both. The future of our city is on the line, and we must ensure the justice of public safety. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Avery McGuinness. Avery, are you on the line? I'm sorry, it appears that Avery is not on the line. Our next speaker is Katie Gibson. Katie, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Please proceed.
Those protesters were bleep heads who should have been arrested a long time ago. The officers were so sick of this mess, and the public is sick of it too. Those protesters were a bunch of a-hole kids. They, we should have stomped on the protesters when they were leaving. Stomp on them right away. I don't give an F. Just gas them and let them run like crazy. Just mark night them and gas them and be done with this mess. That's not how I feel. That's the words straight from officers' mouths who are directly involved in arresting protesters in the city of Phoenix. My name is Katie Gibson McLean. I grew up in East Phoenix in District Eight, and I'm still a District Eight resident. I served on the Ad Hoc Implementation and Review Committee, and I also served on committees in District Eight to develop and create oath on the CRB, which has now been desecrated. It's ridiculous that we are here talking about barking dogs when I sat on a committee for months and was laughed at for requesting an efficiency study of a department who thinks that there's no way they're, they're getting anything wasted, or that there's anything wrong with their department, and listen to retired officers complain about any recommendations they could possibly make for improvement. It's ridiculous. Mr. Nowakowski, this is the sad legacy you're leaving behind, and it's probably good. It's probably good that you just get to sit there without your camera on and not have to face people, because that's how sad you are and this is. To everyone else, you should probably turn your camera on when there's a public meeting. You can't just hide in a, in, in-person meeting. So I would recommend moving forward, if you don't wanna look like a coward, to probably turn your camera on. Why do we need a Grenadier Department in the Phoenix Police Department? This is not the military. We do not need Grenadiers. We also do not need inside law firms to investigate.
Our next speaker is Estralita Avarado. Is Estralita on the line? I'm sorry, she's not on the line. Our next speaker is Anisha Groves. Anisha, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. How dare you cut us off when you are the ones off topic? It's pathetic that we just sat through this noisy dog presentation and other administrative BS after the comments you heard earlier. How dare you put procedure above the safety of your constituents? How dare you shove us to the end of the meeting and leave the meeting and ignore us? I demand that every council member be sat down to listen to all of the general comments being recorded right now if they give a damn about procedure at all. How dare you, Nowakowski, silence your own elected colleague when he wants to respond to his constituents? Mainstream media news reports have made it glaringly obvious that it's true what black and brown people have been telling you over and over again for years that Phoenix PD is a neo-Nazi gang. I'm sure you'll stick to your reformist rhetoric and say these neo-Nazis are a few bad apples that must be rooted out because you don't allow this sort of thing. That's ridiculous and you know it. It should be so obvious that the police department and the county attorney's office who collude with them are inherently white supremacists through and through. How else could these cops have been allowed to keep their jobs this long unless everyone in the department is complicit, and you are all complicit? Because you've chosen to ignore what you've been saying over and over. You keep giving them money, you keep letting them expand this anti-black killing machine, and now it is blowing up in your face. It's just a matter of time before the political prosecutions, the challenge coins gain full national attention, and you know it. If you can't come around to believing us and giving a damn, then at least you can be politically expedient. Demand publicly, loudly, and repeatedly, the county attorney, drop all charges against protesters speaking out against police brutality, and you must do this as many times as it takes for this demand to be met. Stop messing around with saying you need to support the chief in dealing with this problem. You deal with it. The blood and the lives ruined by decades of incarceration and felony records are a hundred percent on your hands because you have the power to stop all of this. Publicly demand all these charges to drop now and until they all get dropped.
Our next speaker is Jisoo Kim. Jisoo, are you on the line? Our next speaker is Rin Orr. Rin, are you on the line? Kelly Kwak, Kelly, are you on the line? Kalik Zida Velasquez, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Um, hi, my name is Cal. I'm a mother from Phoenix, born and raised. I'm a student. I work six days a week sometimes. And I'm also facing felony charges, and I'm tired because of really everything that's going on. Um, I'm currently trying to figure out how in the hell I got beat to shit on a sidewalk by neo-Nazi cops carrying neo-Nazi tokens. Uh, the world doesn't make sense, but then again, it's not that surprising, I suppose. Um, everybody else has already turned you, or cheated you out for keeping this entire corrupt system going, and I just wanna applaud you for upholding it because what you're doing is working. I mean, you're silencing people. You've almost silenced me, but you won't like this because I'm here, and so are so many members of my community, which, if anybody's still listening. Thank you. Um, but I just wanna say, everybody sees what's going on, and I hope to shit everybody pays for it, and that's it.
And I believe our last speaker um was Lucy Liu, if she's on the line. Chairman, uh, that was our last speaker then.
Congressman Garcia? Thank you, Chairperson. Um, I, I'd hope, um, that my colleagues all watch the ABC reporting that folks are talking about. I think it's, it's something like I've never seen before, heard some of the comments, and I wanna thank everyone who waited and, and spent this morning and registered yesterday and took their time to, to come in here. Obviously, this is an appetite that people have to have this conversation. It's important. It's monumental. Um, we had a line of questioning a few meetings ago around protests. We had a, we had an agenda on item. And as District Eight, we asked questions about the prosecutions, about the involvement of our officers, and I feel deceived. I asked a lot of questions in the social media, get used. Um, are we participating or actively encouraging um these gang uh prosecutions? And I was told we weren't. And then I turned on ABC fifteen, and I literally hear an officer, one that's been with the Phoenix Police Department for twenty years, who's a gang specialist, who actually is the head of our community action officers in South Phoenix, make up a gang with ACAB, and then compare it to the Bloods and Crypts. In order to keep someone who was literally observing the First Amendment, who was doing their, their, you know, practicing their rights, um, in order to prevent that person from getting bombed. Um, we've, you know, numerous meetings, we've talked about how these prosecutions are wrong, and that the county attorney needs to drop it, and I understand it's, it's out of our hands now. But it wouldn't be in the county attorney's hands without our police department. And without a unit.
Count, Councilman uh Garcia, I ha- I hate to interrupt you, um, but can you, this is not a formal agenda item, so these were public comments. So if you want to-
I know, and I'm making, I'm making my comment before I ask for a future agenda item. I've already waited till the end of this meeting. Uh, again, I'm elected representative. I asked for time at the beginning. I respectfully took your and the chairman's advice. I'm now making my comments so that I could request certain things for the next agenda.
And all I'm, all I'm asking, all I'm asking you to do, Councilman, is wait until Michael, uh, Councilman or Chairman Nowakowski asks for the future agenda items. We haven't gotten to that portion of the meeting yet. I think he's asking now just for open comment.
So, Councilman uh Garcia, I'll open it up to uh future agenda items.
Can I speak? Thank you. So I was saying, the same department that's testifying uh against people who are observing the First Amendment right is now found to have had a coin. There's two sides to this coin. One is obviously to chill people's First Amendment right, to, you know, do what they're doing, to, to reward each other for hurting our residents of Phoenix. And then the other part is the Nazi symbolism. Literally handing around a coin with Nazi symbolism. At the same time that our Jewish mayor's life is being threatened by one of our officers, which we allowed that officer to, to retire, leaving him in fire. And so that leads me to my next thing, is what do we do with the Brady List? What happens to the officer that charged um that said that he killed the mayor? What happens to these officers that are now outed by a, a news network? So the, the, the things I want for, for the next council meeting is, I wanna know from PSB what they found or didn't find, and why they thought this coin um, was okay, and there's nothing wrong. Cause I'm understanding there's an investigation. It's one thing. I also wanna know what accountability looks like for these officers who lie and make things up in order to prosecute other people. And so, for clear, I wanna know what it is, or who supervises, or, or what the process is when officers are testifying against people or being used as expert witness while they're Phoenix Police employees. I wanna know more about this protesting. I want to know more about this protesting, the Grenadier Unit where the coin was being exchanged. This unit should be dismantled. This should be completely paused. This is literally a unit that's only brought out during political artications. And it's a unit that was handing out coins for hurting people. Instead of protecting and serving them, instead of protecting and serving for their First Amendment right, they were rewarding each other for being violent towards the people they're, they're paid to protect and serve. And the final thing is I want a full explanation. And the, the chief had a, had some trouble with this, but I would like to have a conversation about the Brady List. What does it mean to us and how do we put people on it? How do we use it to either, so one of the things I want to know from is if someone's on the Brady List, you know, are they allowed to be represent us in courts or other places? And so again, really quickly, what happened with the coin? Why do we think it was okay? What does accountability or process look like when our officers are testifying and lying under oath in a court or making things up? More explanation on this Grenadier Unit and why it hasn't been dismantled after we found this coin and what they're doing. And the last thing, further discussion on the Brady List. Um, thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, I think you may be muted.
Sorry about that, Councilmember, uh, Betty.
Thank you. Um, so it, so I, so I would like to take a moment to thank the military veteran that called in and thank you for your service. The coins you earned are a testament to your service and commitment to our community. They are a far cry from those we have seen brought to light. With that, with that being said, I would like to add to the next agenda, to the agenda for next week to have staff give us a report on the ABC fifteen investigation of neo-Nazi references on the challenge coin they have uncovered. Also, at the last subcommittee, I spoke on urging the county attorney's office to reevaluate their position on, on charging the eighteen individual protesters as gang members. Since that time, ABC fif- fifteen has uncovered additional findings on these unsubstantiated charges that I think are important to take into consideration and that I would like staff to present in a report to this subcommittee. With pending legal charges and litigation, I understand that there are, there may be things we are not able to hear about publicly, but I would like staff to provide this subcommittee with an update on these two items. Is that, is that clear enough?
Chairman Noakowski, members of the subcommittee, I, I hear your request, but again, this is an outstanding and ongoing investigation. So our ability to comment on that investigation will be extremely limited until the investigation has come to a close.
Yeah, I, 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 Jeff, I, I understand that, but whatever information can be given to us, I think there's a cry from the community saying, you know, that they, you know, that they want to hear more, more from us. And I understand that there are certain things that cannot be disclosed, but whatever it can be disclosed, I, I think that we should have a report about it and, and at the next meeting.
Chairman Noakowski, members of council, we will, we will circle back to our law department to see where we can share and what we can share. But again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not thinking that there's going to be much that we can share at this point in time until that investigation comes to a close, especially considering that there are other matters attached to that investigation that are also being investigated. But we will, we will circle back.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Garcia, Ben Williams, sorry.
Thank you. Jeff, um, we understand the investigation. Um, I, I wish we would have talked about who's investigating, um, because who we're asking to investigate is a a legal shop that we already hold on retainer. And so if you say they can't talk about what they're investigating, can we talk about a PSB fountain they defined? And with this law firm, I'd, I'd be great for them to come and understand what it is they're going to investigate. And I also want to know from staff, um, what tools are we giving them? Are they able to interview the officers? What information are they going to be able to gather? Um, we need to know that in order to trust and believe that this investigation is independent and real. We are already getting hit by the media and community that it's ridiculous that we're asking attorneys that we hold already that we're paying already to investigate something within our department, obviously admitting that our PSB, our internal affairs are, are not doing a good job. But then also what gives us assurance that this investigation is going to be worth it or is going to give anything different than what PSB gave? Um, and so, yeah, if we can't have obviously detailed conversations, I would want to know what powers this investigators are going to have, this, this law firm that we, we put on this task. Um, and what that investigation is going to look like and also, you know, yeah, I, I want to have that conversation if we can't have detailed conversations about, uh, the investigation or whatever.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. For future agenda items, I agree with Councilman Garcia. I'm really interested in the Brady List. How do people get on the Brady List? Do they stay forever? Are there any consequences for being on the Brady List? I, I think there's a lot of confusion about it and I would really like to have it fully explained and explained. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Any other future agenda items? And Jeff, um, thank you for, for taking over these meetings. I know that this is, um, you're a new member of our committee, so welcome. And also, um, we'll try to figure out what we can say, what we can't say. And I agree with Councilmember Williams, it would be great to understand what, how do you get onto the Brady List? And once you get onto the Brady List, what is the procedure? Are you on it forever or is it a short period of time? Uh, we need to get more in- information on that. And with the coin, um, if you all can walk us through what the procedure is, what's going on right now, where is it at? And maybe not talk about the investigation, but, um, the stages that it's at and where we as councilmembers, part of the community can have more input in, into that process. Any other questions or concerns? With that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chairman.
God save us. Thank you so much, everybody. We are so grateful for you. And, um, we just want you to know that the news is covering this meeting, so, um, we hope that your work will be highlighted. We appreciate you for pushing these crucial agenda items on this ridiculous meeting. Um, literally, it would not have happened without you, so we cannot thank you enough for showing up. Um, let's pass it to Sean while we're all still standing so we can detox. Oh, and Zerida, go for it.
Yeah, Jamar, I just wanted to, um, apologize for having to cut you off because I really wanted to hear more about this Brady List. Like more detailed information about Brady List and the connection between these challenge coins and trying to force the MCAO to drop these stupid, um, you know, political prosecutions. So we apologize for cutting you off and hopefully we'll have a chance to get to hear more from you soon. Um, and Sean, seriously, I've never needed a detox more. And if y'all have ever seen Purple Rain, please bathe us in the soothing waters of like Minnetonka, like right now, so the mic is yours.
Hey, Zerida, thank you. Um, thank you, everyone, for being here this morning. Um, this was definitely not an easy morning for us. Um, please excuse any meowing or screaming you might hear in the background. Um, my cat is now a proficient bee hunter and she's very mad that I won't let her on the balcony anymore. Um, so just, you know, to pretend you don't hear her. Um, so hi, everyone. My name is Sean. My pronouns are they/them. Um, I'm, uh, excited to lead this detox with you all, um, especially after that kind of, um, hailstorm of a meeting. Um, today's detox is something new. Um, I really want to try something new with you all. And so I'm excited and I hope that it does, uh, something good for everyone in the room. I hope that it feels affirming and celebratory in the ways that we need right now. Um, so today what we're going to do is like a mini workshop called Mantras of Ancestral Strength. And ah, the whole goal of it is in the title, right? We're trying to, um, create short mantras for ourselves, things that we can write down somewhere or repeat or put up on the wall, um, that reminds us of the strength of those who came before us and how we can draw upon that to get through our own challenges, whether that's personal, um, political, career, you know, whatever you need, uh, a mantra, whatever you need these mantras for. So first things first, make sure you have like pencil and paper. Um, if you're writing on electronic device, that's fine too. Um, you just need something to write with. Make sure you have something to write with.
Sean's muted. Sean, you're muted.
Yeah, I know. Sorry, guys. I have to like, like my cat's being really bad. I had to get my partner to come get her. Um, okay, so we all have something to write with. And we're going to think about this question. It's a very simple question. Um, who are some of your ancestors? Um, so I put in the chat right now, this can be family, friends, loved ones. This can even be folks you are not related to, but who, uh, you do relate to deeply or have impacted you very deeply. You want to write, I would say, three to four people. Um, you can go all the way up to about six people. But, um, for the purpose of today and the time that we have, I wouldn't do any more than six people. And then when you're done with that, can you raise your hand on Zoom, please? That would be awesome. Yes, um, when I asked folks to raise their hand, I meant, um, like the raise your hand feature in Zoom, not necessarily on your camera. You don't have to do that. You don't have to hold your hand up like that. Okay, in the interest of time, let's stop our ancestral brainstorm. Real quick, does everyone have at least three, um, ancestors written down? Okay. I, I think everyone does have at least three. All right, cool. So, um, we don't have to share our ancestors in the chat, but I'm going to share mine in the chat. Um, just so everyone can get a, an idea of what, um, this should look like, right? Um, but I have my great-grandma, my granddad, and I have the one and only Amir Baraka, my spiritual mentor. So if your list, um, is complete, then we can now think about the qualities that these ancestors have that you admire. So I'll also put that in the chat. Of the ancestors you've listed, what qualities do you admire most? Um, it's important to list nouns and adjectives, not verbs, okay? Nouns and adjectives. So for instance, I wrote bravery, faith, and self-determination for my three ancestors that I listed. I'm going to put some music back on while we do this part. We have Jessica says grandmother, mother, father, kindness, fire, resilience. Also, um, can y'all hear the music? Anyone hear it? Okay. All right, has everyone written at least one word for each ancestor? Okay, I see nods and thumbs up. Um, okay, I think we're good. Jamar puts in the chat, uh, Marcelino Flores, Ralph Ellison, Don Miguel Ruiz, Juanita Flores, joy, understanding, care, love, introspection. Thank you. It's a powerful list, Jamar. Um, all right, folks, we are almost at the actual mantra-making part. Um, we're just generating all this language so we can do a little plug-and-play, uh, like a, like, you know, fill-in-the-blank sort of situation. So now I would like you to write an antonym, right? So the opposite, um, for each of the qualities you've written about your ancestors, right? So let me give you an example. Um, I said bravery, faith, and determination. So the opposite of those would be fearful, hopeless, and codependent. Or that's what I identify as the opposite of those, right? This is, um, obviously creative writing. It's all up to interpretation, but you want to write the opposite of those qualities. And again, try and keep it in the noun adjective form. The verb form is hard to work with once we actually start plugging these into the sentences. Okay, um, how are folks doing? Do we need more time for antonyms? Yeah, I actually see some nods for this one. Okay, so there's, um, like a minute left of this song. We'll let this song finish. like a minute left of this song. We'll let this song finish. Okay, y'all, about thirty more seconds. Okay, um, so we should have our antonyms for our ancestral qualities, right? Alright, and now here comes the actual mantra making. Um, it'll be pretty simple. I'm gonna put it in the chat. Okay, so depending on how you wrote your words, you might have to change some of this sentence structure just a little bit. You can change it so it fits for you however you want. Looking at some people's words, um, for instance, some, it, it like, uh, yeah, I think I'll let you all change it how you need to. I won't try and over determine that too much. But we're just gonna write short declarative mantras that name our ancestors and their strengths. So when I am, uh, antonym, I will insert quality of ancestor and their name, right? So let me show you my examples, my three examples. And again, you can change this sentence. You can modify it so that it fits the words you wrote. But for me, when I am fearful, I remember the bravery of my granddad, John. When I am hopeless, I remember the faith of my great grandma, Thelma. When I am codependent, I remember the self-determination of Amir Baraka. So that's how mine came out. If you need to shift the words a little bit, when I am feeling, when I am faced with, when I am challenged by, you know, you can use all these different, um, ways of sort of naming the issue, the problem, and also naming this quality in the ancestor. So we are a little bit over time, but everyone is really into this, it seems like. So let's just keep rocking. Let's do like two minutes. We'll do two minutes for this because it should be easy to plug it in and then we'll ask for a few people to put in the chat. Indirectly impacted people can share aloud and then I'll pass it back so we can wrap up and get on, get on mornings and afternoons back. Okay, about one more minute, y'all. Actually, um, are folks ready? Yeah, okay, let's run. Okay, some, somebody's not. It's okay. Um, let's go ahead and, um, start sharing in the chat. Um, if you are done and you would like to share in the chat, you can do that. If you're not done, just keep working at it. Um, again, we can start sharing in the chat if folks want to. No one has, so I'm not sure if that means people aren't comfortable or if they didn't hear me, but I just wanted to make sure I repeat that. Um, oh, we do have someone. Patricia, when I feel afraid and want to quit, I remember the bravery, courage, and persistence of my Uncle Martin. Thank you, Patricia. Jessica would not like to share this portion, but is thankful for the activity. I appreciate that, Jessica. Thank you for saying that. I realize that this may be extremely personal for some of us. And I definitely intended that, but also don't want anyone to feel, um, outside of their comfort zone and be vulnerable in a way that they don't feel comfortable with. So we're not getting a lot of stuff in the chat and that's totally cool. I know that everyone has been participating, um, because of the silence, um, the entire time. Um, Chelsea has shared, when I am insecure, I will recall the confidence of Marie Colvin. Thank you for sharing that. Chelsea, um, and Ben or Ben, I'm not sure who exactly who that came from. Okay, it did come from Chelsea. Um, alright, cool. Um, I'll just do, okay, we have Joe, actually. Well, I'll read Joe's and then, um, I'll ask if there is a directly impacted person who wants to read out loud, and if not, then we can go ahead and move on. Cool. Um, so Joseph Lario, when I face hate, I remember how my abuelita survived. When things get dark, I retreat to the warm memories of my brother. When I feel tired, I draw on the strength of Nana Alicia. And when I feel lost, I get grounded in Nana Carmen's wisdom. Wow, thank you, Joe. Thank you for really taking such a simple sentence structure and like really making some poetry out of it and some, um, meaning out of it. I love, you know, warm memories, um, wisdom, facing hate. I like that a lot. Thank you. Okay, well, no one has volunteered to share out loud and that's totally cool. I just wanna give that space always to our actual voices, cuz they're so important. Okay, Al put in the chat and I promise this will be the last one. I just don't wanna leave anything in the chat, you know, unread. But Al Harris says, I will never weaken my bones because cousin John's strength, because cousin John strengthens my bones. Even though I want to end it, granny Pat said I should always finish it. Wow, thank you. Thank you, Al. Thank you. Um, and thank you, everyone. I hope that these really were important to you. And I do encourage you to actually like, keep these, like write them down somewhere and, and keep them somewhere. You can come back and, and reread them, um, because you will feel these things again. And, you know, this is just a little tool for the mind and the spirit to reconnect. Thank you all. Um, I'll pass it back to, uh, Zoraida, I believe.
Thank you, Sean. That was, uh, well, that was magic, actually. And, um, I wrote down, uh, how to share this activity with friends and family cuz that was, that was really beautiful. So thank you for that. Without getting all teary-eyed cuz y'all got me all my feelings. Um, Patricia, would you like to do our outro?
Yeah, thank you, Zoraida. Yeah, me too. I have some tears in my eyes. That was so beautiful. And Sean, thank you for that exercise because it's a reminder. We are powerful when we come together, but think of the lineage of ancestors we all bring and they're all with us right now. So I really appreciate folks sharing, um, the qualities and attributes that are with us right now. That gives me chills. Um, super moving, Sean. You are magic. We are so grateful for you and to everyone for being here and bringing your ancestors. I know this was a lot to handle. Um, Sean, thank you again for giving us that exercise to really fortify our spirits and help us keep doing this work. Thank you so much to each of you for being here, showing up with your ancestors in the ways that you do to move that dial toward justice. We know that as abolitionists working daily for black liberation, that the police do not, will not, cannot ever create or contribute to community safety. We know that abolishing police in prisons is the only way forward. And also, we know, we see again and again, power will never seat itself without a demand. So thank you for being here, helping us push and make these demands. Please keep taking care of yourself. Keep those affirmations close to your heart. Keep affirming everyone that's in the movement with you so that we can continue to work together. Um, we do have more series coming out on Dave Bisco being's investigative series about the politically charged, um, prosecutions. We will be meeting Monday night again to view them, the new ones, and talk about it. So please catch the link and sign up for that. Um, we will see you there on Monday. And then we can send out an email with the call to action to write to our new assistant city manager and all the city council members to let them know how much trash they're serving and that we do not accept it. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a beautiful day and we'll see you soon.